Good evening, everyone. Chair Solomon, you're on mute, by the way.
And there's two DeBys. Beautiful day out there today.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Commissioner Adal is on his way to his house. To spoke with him.
Okay.
Debbie, did you get my message about the Design Commission meeting next Wednesday?
Did you do leave it today?
Yeah.
I have not checked my voicemails for today, but I'm sure it's there.
So just a reminder of our meeting next Wednesday for Design Commission.
Yes, absolutely.
I've seen two DeBys. Oh, they're. We're down to one.
One. Oh, one's gone.
Just one now.
Jessica is muted.
Good evening, Jessica.
And Commission, before we get started, I think there was a. When Debbie and I were trying to get this packet done as I walked out the door last week, I think Debbie and I got our wires crossed. There are two new business items. The first one is the RFP, which is the first item in your packet, and then the second item is the amendments to the community facilities element. Uh, there are two separate items. Everything's in the packet. They just got listed as one item.
Sorry.
No, no, like I said, we were rushing to get this as I was walking out the door, so. It's not a big deal.
So we have got another minute. Did you enjoy your vacation, Jason?
I did. We went down to the Oregon coast for four or five days. It rained the whole time, but we were literally like forty-five, we were like forty feet from the beach. You could see haystack rock out of our window. So even though it was stormy, we felt like we were at the beach all day because the whole backside of the building was nothing but glass windows. So even when you were inside, you could still see the waves crashing over the whole day. So it felt like you were there, but not out in the cold. It was cold, windy and wet, so not a lot of going out. The kids did get in their swim trunks and run from the house out to the water, lay down in the surf. So they could say they were in the water and then ran back. It was like thirty-eight degrees or something. I was like, you guys are nuts.
A rainy day at the ocean beats any other day.
Yeah, like I said, we sat inside and drank coffee and played two games of Risk. Needless to say, I won both times. World domination on my, you know. And watched my Jayhawks win the NCAA tournament. So that was nice.
Alrighty, it is. It is, uh, six oh one on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. And I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Solomon?
Here.
Vice Chair Charles Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Adal?
Here.
Commissioner Sarver? Commissioner Sarver?
Here.
Sorry. Commissioner Benyon?
Here.
Commissioner Hubler?
Here.
Commissioner Adal?
Here.
City staff, Jason Sullivan, planning and building supervisor?
Here.
Debbie McAllen, Planning Commission clerk here.
And we have a quorum. And at this time, we'll take a poll for our next meeting, which will be the fourth of May, twenty twenty-two. That I have people indicate if they can make it. One, two, three. And we have a quorum for next time, so we'll meet next on May fourth, and it will be at six o'clock. And Jason, have we got a date when we are actually meet in physical form?
It will probably be either, it will probably be the earliest the June meeting. Um, excuse me a second. Sorry. Um, I came ahead to, I forgot which commissions I've told this to. We are moving to a new building. Um, and we're waiting to go back to in-person meetings till we move into that new building. Um, we should be moved in in May, so I'm hoping the June meetings will be back in person. My understanding in talking with Sadie is I just have to have a call-in option, which we can do, um, and not have blue jeans and all the crazy enough that we have had set up. So we're hoping to go back to in-person in June and do that when we get into the new public services center uh, out off of Ninety-sixth Street. So instead of trying to figure out how to do it in the council chamber and then a month later, try to figure out how to do it in the new building. Uh, we're, I'm hoping June will be the meeting. I just, I haven't got a confirmed date on when we're moving yet. They're still trying to get the building put together.
Thank you for that. Uh, approval minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any changes, corrections, additions? Got appearing, a call to question all those.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Now, the commission reports. Parks Commission report.
Um, so Parks Commission. Read my brain here for a second, you know, we haven't met for two weeks. Um, we went over our, you know, our stuff, um, and then oh man, what else did we do? Uh, we talked about the Allen York project. Um, there's going to be some uh, steps possibly coming with parking for boats, uh, launch. Um, the boat launch could be closed this year or maybe open, depends on if the city can figure out parking on that. Yes, Jason, go ahead.
Um, I, they did talk about that at council last night. What they're going to do is it's going to be open, but the city's providing no parking for boat trailers. And they're only selling passes to city residents. If I got my briefing from the city council last night, correct?
Okay, that's good. At least it'll be, you know, open and people can still use it. Uh, but yeah, with the new park ballfields going in, um, that is gonna hang up for the boat parking that we used to have until future down the road, uh, projects can happen. Um, and then we talked about, um, we have a uh, trail systems that are actually moving along pretty good. Now, we have the, um, as you're going on four-ten, um, you go from Angeline up to four-ten. There's actually a walking path on with stairs and bicycle, um, trucks there. So the bike tires can go in and they can take their bikes up from the bottom to the top now and make a little call off. So it kind of helping to bring trails together. Um, I think there was, is it just, there's one new section being started now, Jason? Was that it?
No, there's three, three sections under construction right now.
But it wasn't just one of them was coming up that's brand new. Everything else was already started?
Yeah, the one that goes from kind of Angeline over to four-ten or Angeline over to Old Sumner Buckley Highway. That one, I think, is the most recent one to get started.
Yeah, so at least we'll get somewhere and then future phases will be the, um, getting to, um, Lake Taps and Allen York Park. Um, so that'll be in the future of how to get there from the rest of the, um, stuff. And then another thing that we've been talking about is, um, the possibility we've had someone bring forward renaming the, um, uh, Community Garden. Um, that's been tabled a couple of times now, um, as there's been a lot of back and forth on that. So that's still been tabled, so we don't really know what's going to happen because we want to make sure that the, um, the current board leadership over at the Community Garden has their voices heard in that. So we tabled it until, um, we can talk some more. I think that's it. Those are basics.
I was on the Fallow Creek Trail Sunday, and when I got to the new section, it was fenced off, which surprised me.
Oh.
Yeah, there, if you're coming from the south, you're going to hit a spin-stuff section that's currently under construction. And if you get on the, the section that was built by the Ninety-Fifth Trail, you're going to run into a section that's blocked off because they're building that center section right now.
Okay.
And that concludes the Parks, uh, Design Commission report.
Well, uh, we're meeting in a week, so I will have, um, updated information next month. On, um, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, that we will be reviewing, um, mini storage, self-storage, um, facility, um, at our Design Commission again a week from tonight, so. Jason, I don't know if there's anything else, but that's all I have really for.
Yeah, that's all there is.
So thank you.
Public comment concerns, none. Public hearing?
So this was, I would just say, this was an item that we were hoping to have done, but we didn't. But since we already advertised the hearing, we need to see someone on the commission to make the motion on the agenda so that we can, um, so I guess procedural chair, we probably need to open it and then have someone make the motion. After you open the hearing, make the motion to continue it and then we'll come back with everything.
Right. So I'm going to declare ordinance A B twenty-two dash forty-seven. Ordinance D twenty-two dash forty-seven amendments to temporary permit code. I'm going to open the meeting and I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until June first. Somebody make that motion, Craig?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Carrie. Moved and seconded to continue the meeting to one June. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. And the public hearing will be continued to the first of June. Own continuing business, none. New business. A B dash twenty-two dash thirty-one, ordinance D twenty-two dash thirty-one. Amendments to community facilities and services, element parks, trails, and open space requests for proposals.
Uh, Chair, that's what I was meaning. I think these accidentally got merged. So the first item is the RFP and then there's a second item, which is the amendments to the comprehensive plan. So if you would allow me, we will do the RFP first because it's first in the packet and then we'll do the comprehensive plan amendments.
So these are the amendments or the?
The RFP is, the RFP, the Parks Trails and Open Space RFP is first.
Okay, got it. And if you would start your briefing, sir?
Uh, so we are, we, the last time we did a, a significant update to our Parks Trails and Recreation Plan, our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan was back in two thousand eight. Uh, we kind of did, uh, an update in two thousand fifteen, but it was a, it was a very minor one just to get us enough to get through the periodic update and get us recertified with RCO. Um, however, as it's been fourteen years, um, we have decided that we do need to do a kind of a new Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. Uh, this is the RFP that would, you know, we would use to select the consultants. Um, we did want to run this through both Parks Commission and Planning Commission before we took it to council for their final blessing because there's so many different eyes and interest in this proposal, in this topic currently. Um, additionally, um, the, uh, the, uh, the Parks Plan will address kind of this conversion issue that we have out at Allen York Park, which basically is there's about sixty thousand square feet of Allen York Park that's being used for non-park purposes. Um, and so under our nineteen seventy-two agreement that funded the acquisition of Allen York Park, um, we need to figure out a way to kind of replace that square footage, uh, so this plan will address that conversion issue. Um, and identify additional areas that will be set aside permanently for park use, um, which could be other city properties that are just generally held properties. And then we also have to do a master plan for Victor Falls as a result of a grant that we got back in two thousand nineteen. Um, and so as part of the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, uh, that would cover that, that, that requirement. So, um, as I said, we, we prepared the RFP to, to go through all the items. Um, I didn't want to walk through each item, just kind of open up to the Planning Commission if they had concerns or things that they would like to see specifically addressed or removed from the RFP. Um, and then it'll eventually go to CDC and council for their kind of final blessing.
I see Craig had a question.
Yeah, Jason, that was the entirety of that is for the replacement of the cellphone tower area?
No, there's the cellphone tower area and there's a and within that area too, there's areas that we're using for, uh, public works operations. Uh, what we call the decant facility where they're bringing in the kind of street sweepings and letting them dry out. Uh, and I think some soil and bark storage area in that area as well.
So those are all.
Would they get moved to the new building then?
They will likely get moved to the new building. However, because we've been using that property for not park use for about twenty-five years now, we still have to go through the process of declaring it no longer park property and identifying an approximately sixty thousand acres of other city property that will be de-restricted for parks only.
Yeah, Carrie, you have a comment?
I, it's actually just what I was going to ask.
Uh, Todd?
Yeah, curious, did they normally, do we normally put something in here with, um, like traffic studies and things like that, Jason, in there or not necessarily?
Not at this level of the park planning, but when you would do the individual getting down into permitting and doing all the individual permitting for the elements, then yeah, you would do kind of a more, more of a traffic study at that time. Um, this is our park commission is already known as going to be a heavy lift already and a significant cost just to get this work done. Um, there will be an ad hoc committee and so, or a, well, I've been, the name might change. It'd probably be a steering committee, but it will be made up of at least, well, one park commissioner and one planning commissioner. So the, the commissions are going to have to figure out who they want from that group to sit on that steering committee. Things will be, larger questions will be brought back to both commissions, but some of the kind of as we work through this will be through this smaller committee with members from parks, uh, planning, uh, arts, operations, special events. It's about a nine-person steering committee. Uh, and then larger items would then be brought forth to the individual council commissions. And the city, we're asking for a city council member also to sit on the steering committee. So that's at least how it's kind of structured right now.
Okay, because if I remember right, with this new ballfield going in, I know, I know there was a lot of community outreach when previous Allen York Park kind of plan was put into place, which I think is amazing. I think we definitely need the community involved, but I don't believe there was a traffic study done, right? And then it's still, it still kind of got in the works of being approved and.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a little bit of a hiccup when they went through the permitting process that we're having to kind of go through and do. But as you build out the individual phases, that's when you would go through and do the more detailed itemized, uh, itemized studies.
Okay, gotcha.
And the, this will be, if I, I don't remember for sure, was this going to be part of the overall master plan of the city? It'll be for, this part will be all the parks encompassed into this one plan?
Yes.
We'll start planning all the parks together and what path and what needs to go happen first, correct?
Correct. And it'll be financially constrained, meaning that if the city council, what, when they decide what they want to do with funding, the plan will reflect it. So if there's only X amount of dollars, it'll be that we can pro- that we can project being available for funding, that's all that the plan will be based on.
What's the timeline going to look like? When do we start?
We're hoping to get the RFP out on the ground end of April, first part of May. Um, then a consultant would be selected probably June or July and kicked off kind of late fall, early fall, um, and running through two thousand twenty-three.
Any other questions on this item? Yes, I'm sorry, Jessica.
You're good. Okay, so just kind of piggybacking off of Carrie's comment. So is this like, this is the master plan that we can use going forward when like more money's available or if we get more grants, like these are the projects that we can keep on kind of facing it off of?
Yeah, so this will be the conceptual plan for all the parks, trails and open space in the city. It's meant to be built on the work we've already done. Refining, tweaking things, but not kind of going back and redoing things. And I need to clean that up a little bit, I think, in the RFP. And then there'll be two projects lists, the kind of, here's everything we want. And then the constrained project list, which will be based on funding. So if we were to secure some big super grant, that might happen, but that's more of a dream than a reality, which is why we'll have a constrained project list, which will be the, the items that we're using based on the revenues that we can actually project.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, like, this is our plan for the funding we have now, but in the future, we can keep on using the plan if more money becomes available.
Yeah, or another fund, yeah, or another funding source becomes available because then you can tweak the financially constrained plan. So you already have projects that you can add or take off.
Okay.
Good. Todd?
And this, this does include the Midtown Park master plan?
It completely, yeah, includes a conceptual plan for Midtown Park.
And then it also, uh, it reads in there, but they will, the consultant will come back with some additional financial options and funding sources and things like that, at least recommendations?
Well, they're not going to be the ones coming up with the funding sources. That's going to be the city council. So the city council is going to say, these are the funding sources that we have. We'll work with finance to get a projection on what those funding sources look like. And then we'll build the, the, the financially constrained projects based on those funding sources.
Okay, so the consultant's not, not doing any type of work on that?
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to, to tell us what our funding sources are because those are decisions the city council has to make. The city council would have to make the decision to like a B and O tax or a bond. And since those things then take other votes, there's no way to say that those would be for sure funding sources, so they would be put onto other funding options for things you could do if other projects became available or if those funds became available.
Any other comments or questions? We probably will see an update on this, uh, at the May meeting?
Uh, May or June, I don't know. It depends on when we get to city council. Um, as I explained, the Planning Commission or Parks Commission, this is an optional element. So the state law doesn't require you to have a Parks Plan. RCO requires you to have one if you want to apply for RCO funding. Um, so there's nothing that mandates the city council do this. I just put that out as a caution because if the council decides that the cost is too high, when we get the RFPs in, it may be that we don't end up doing anything. So we're trying to get the RFP written, get it on the street, and then we'll know, then the council will have another decision point to make, which is whether or not to spend the money on doing the work.
Uh, we definitely need to update the plan. Todd?
Yeah, just following up on that, Jason, there's a section in there that says, uh, strategic capital and financial action plan.
Mm-hmm.
What does all that entail then?
So that's when we are going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be working with FCS to update our, um, park impact fee ordinance at the same time we're doing this. So we'll be having a decision point for the city council on what they want to do with park impact fees. That'll give us kind of a new amount for park impact fees. Um, and then any other funding sources like REITs, the ones that we have and whether our council wants to identify a new funding source. Um, a bond could be identified as a funding source. We'd have to figure out how to denote that in the plan if the bond fails, um, because bonds require a vote of the public. Uh, or if there's some other revenue source the council identifies like a B and O tax. We don't, at this point, nothing's been made for sure. So that plan then will be based on available resources. We'll identify the projects over the next six to, the next six year, next twenty years that will build based on those revenue projections.
Gotcha. So it's built in there. It's just the consultant won't be doing that.
They're going to be doing parts of it, so they're, they're going to be doing, they're identifying the cost for the, the projects. And then we'll be looking at the funding sources and they'll be taking those funding sources and the projects list and seeing which projects can be built.
So, so they will have, so the consultant will be a part of some of that funding then?
They, they will be, they, how it's spent, I guess, is the better way to say it.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, for sure. Okay, great.
Debbie, you had something?
I did. So Jason, you were talking about, you know, if the funding is not, um, doesn't meet the, the, the information that is returned, would we not think about doing this in phases? So if, you know, if, if one of these projects, you know, we could do a portion of it, which makes sense, would we choose not to do that as opposed to not do it at all?
Well, when it comes to the actual park improvements.
Right.
But, right, yeah, you'll have two lists. You'll have the ultimate build out with everything in it. And then you'll have, based on your funding, which of those portions or parts of projects could be built? So that you're either building parts of it or you're not built, you know, it depends on how, I don't like using phases because it may not be a phase. It may be that all that gets built for twenty years. But we're doing it, understanding what else should be in that area. Because I just don't know what the funding sources, I mean, you've got to remember the ballfield that we're building out at Allen York Park is coming in about, I think, like three and a half, four million dollars. And to fund it, they're taking, I think, almost two, two and a half million dollars out of the general fund. So that
Right.
type of project is not sustainable for everything you want to do. So there, that's why we're going to have two lists, the, everything we want in the parks list and then the financially constrained project list. And the financially constrained ones will be the ones that we can, we, we know we'll be able to do based on the revenues that we have right now. So if you get more revenue, then you could pull projects off the dream, basically the other list, the dream list.
Um, I also wanted to note that on page eight of sixteen in your, where it says, um, long-term, five to six years, not five to six years.
Oh, is that the?
Yeah, I can't read. Let's see how many bullets.
And financial.
Yeah, it's just the first.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so just.
I'll get that updated. Thanks, Debbie.
Anyone else have comments?
Oh, I see it. I got it.
Got it. So we will see Parks and Trails next meeting and the meeting after. Now, the amendments for the community facilities and service element?
Yep. And so this is just a briefing. We haven't set the public hearing date. Um, so we're required, well, there's two things going on. Uh, one, uh, we are required by state law to have a list of projects within our capital facilities plan um, that is being used to fund transportation or being in part funded by transportation impact fees. And also that list needs to identify the percentage of the improvement that is associated with capacity improvement. Um, so we went through and had SCJ look at some. So we went through and had SCJ look at some projects that we would like to add to that list that are not that are capacity improvements. So you've got two lists. In the mobility element, you have every project that we think may or may not get built. Some of those are capacity improvement projects and some of those are project improvement projects. So if a new signal or a new road serves only a development, it is a project developer project, not a capacity improvement project for which we collect transportation impact fees. Transportation impact fees are projects that serve the system as a whole, not just specifically a specific project. Also, there was some confusion because one, the, the current transportation impact fee code referenced the old community facilities element, which we now call the community facilities and services element. So that was changed. And also the table was living in the Title 19 and not in the community facilities and services element. So the things that we've done is one, we're amending the code to reflect the removal of community capital facilities element and re, noting it as a community facilities element, a community services, community facilities and services element, and also identifying new projects that were not on the list when it was last updated in 20, in 08, 09. And there's some projects that were constructed that were removed off the list and some new capacity projects that were identified for TIF funding. And then we had SCJ Alliance look at those ones that we had recommended for approval to make sure that they met that requirement, that they are considered a capacity system improvement and not a project level improvement. So for example, one project that we had on there that we went back and forth on was 97th Street out in East Town. And looking at what's being done to, to change that road alignment, it was determined that road is more of a project requirement because it only really serves one developer's project and not a system capacity improvement. And so that project, 97th Street project was not included on this list when we updated it. So I can answer any questions. I can, let me get to the list here and then I can share my screen real quick. Let me kind of walk through the list. So all the amendments to the ordinance are really just changing the name from community, from capital facilities element to community service, community facilities and element. So the new list, I'm just going to get there. And I'm going to share my screen real quick, so just bear with me. Your computer's not working. There you go. All right. So you should be seeing my Blue Beam review screen now. And what we have on here is all the list and I can kind of zoom in here. So what we did is, is we added certain, we added projects to the list and I'm going to have to kind of move you down. So someone has a question, Brad, please let me know because I'm not going to be able to see hands. So what we did is you can see, this was the oh-five list. And the projects that were included on the oh-five list, which was the last updated, oh-eight, oh-nine. So anything that has a yes by it was already on the list. The only thing that we did was looked at the priority and the, and inflated the, the cost from 2015 to 2021 based on increased construction cost. So the new projects, these are all, all projects that have been there. And as you can see right here, this is what I was talking about, the percentage. You can see that, you know, 95% of the project cost is a capacity improvement and five percent is were kind of related to the the development projects within that area. I think the new ones are on page two. So just get to page two. So the ones that we added were basically out, were a couple of projects out in East Town, which was 101st. And then also the 219, 219th Avenue, which connects 410 to 101st. And then on the intersections, the only new intersection that was added was the 410 to 14th Roundabout out on 410. Those were the only projects that were added as part of TIF dollars based on the analysis of them being, serving, them being capacity improvement projects, not project-related improvements.
So question on, I've looked at things on this before. So who makes the decisions on where things or what things are going in?
What do you, what do you mean?
So like at the Church Lake Road and West Taps Highway intersection, it says install new signal and additional turn lanes.
Right.
Who makes those decisions and who is the one that says what to do there?
So the, that, the project was identified in the community mobility element, which is the transportation plan, which was done in 2015 to identify the intersection improvements. And that was the preferred alternative, which was the, which was a signal with additional turn lane. So there was the city engineer, the transportation plan goes through the planning commission and also goes through city council.
Okay. Is that one, I, I know that intersection and it does not need a turn signal. I live right next to that intersection. So that's things like that, just kind of wondering like where, when they make those decisions, are they sitting there looking at it? We've actually asked them to put stop signs there at that, at turn it into.
It's. It's basically based on both, it's based on transportation modeling, what would be the preferred solution. So when you look at future growth and stop signs are actually not the best option when you, like in that situation because it causes backups on the two legs that are currently having no backup. So the, the, the traffic signal based on the traffic modeling was the preferred solution. But it's also kind of a a lower, a lower priority one. I guess, I mean, that's, the, the solutions are identified based on kind of current traffic counts, future modeling about, about a volume that goes through those intersections. And then the prefer, and then based on the amount of traffic that goes through, what's the solution that needs to be handled? The only ones that get a unique are the ones on 410 because we have to get approval from Department of, Department of Transportation because 410 is a state highway, which is why you're seeing the roundabouts at both 214th, 224th and 410. I know this says signal, but the ICE came back that it has to be a roundabout. I should, I should change that.
SR 410 to 14th one, is that the one you're talking about? That's the one at the Safeway intersection, correct?
Correct. That ICE came back and said a roundabout and the council has not wanted to put the roundabout in. So we don't know what's going to happen there. And then 224th came back as a roundabout also from the Department of Transportation and that's what's proposed.
Uh, Jason, Jessica's got a question.
Hi, okay. So my question is, um, so this is kind of like the plan, right? Kind of like how we were talking about the park plan, like this is like where you're pulling projects from. And I'm guessing we pull highest to lowest. Is there any projection on when these plans are going to, when these are going to happen?
No, because it's all based on when we have revenue. So these are just, these are just the projects that we are collecting transportation impact fees for. And then we build as we have complete funding because nothing is 100% funded by transportation impact fees because the city council did not set the transportation impact fee level at 100%. It's like, I think, 30%, it hasn't been updated in probably 15 years. So we're not collecting 100% of the cost. So there's still other funding sources that have to come together.
Okay, but this is kind of the, the list of our plans.
This is the list that, yeah, that we're using transportation impact fee, we're collecting transportation impact fee dollars to construct.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm excited to do like the roundabout, there'll be public hearings and feedback and such.
Uh, not necessarily because those are, like I said, this, the, the, the the design of those was all predicated on what the state wanted. We got it, we were applying for a grant, the council at the time, and Commissioner Dolan can speak to that, he was on council plan, decided not to move forward with the grant so that, that intersection is just sitting out there with not 100% sure what we're going to do. Because the, the ICE report, which is the interchange control examination report from WASDOT said it needed to be a roundabout, both at 214th and 224th.
That will be interesting.
So that one, I don't know is what's going to happen.
Yeah, the, the ICE study came back and said that's what they recommended, but at the time, we couldn't find another roundabout that, in our opinion, or at least in my opinion, that made sense with as much traffic going north, south and east, west was the problem. You know, it's very busy both ways and but yeah, it was, there's some confusion there. But yeah, Department of Transportation, right, Jason? They basically came back and said, this is what we want and you have to pay for it, kind of idea.
Yeah, I mean, yes and no. I mean, we were applying to get state funding from a state grant. So the state would have ended up paying for it through the grant, but yeah, at this point, we don't know how we convince WASDOT to change the ICE. And since it's WASDOT's intersection as well. Yeah, we, we're kind of, that one's kind of stuck and I don't know what's going to happen at 214th and 410. 224th is proceeding as a roundabout at this time.
Okay. Knocked myself out.
It's just, it's just a roundabout grant. It's okay. You don't need to throw stuff around over there.
So yeah, so these are the projects that kind of met, they met three, they met at least three criteria. One, they were identified in the community mobility element as a project that needed to get built. Three, they, I guess it's mainly two, two tests. The second one was that they were capacity, system capacity improvement projects, not project. And what I mean by project, developer needed improvements. For example, 97th out where we're doing the peak 410 development, that road is just basically serving peak 410. So therefore it's considered a project level improvement, not a capacity level improvement. It was not, it was removed from the list. It was initially discussed about being on there, but was taken off. 101st on the south side serves multiple properties and serves as a parallel route from 219th all the way to 224th. When it's fully constructed. And then 229th, the 219th section is just that section from 410 to 101st and then the section from 101st that just serves the properties is not included. So it's really just those projects that are, as I said, capacity improvement projects. And the way they were, the, the design was chosen was based on our street adopted street standards for what that cross section looks like. So that's what's discussed in the road improvements. And then the intersection was when we did our intersection analysis, when we did our last comp plan update, based on the current volumes and future traffic volumes, what do those intersections need to have in order to be able to handle the, the traffic? And so you look at signals, turn lanes, stop signs. And that's why Church Lake, based on that analysis, was identified to be future, in the, in the future to be a signal. And this will come back for a full public hearing with the planning commission, but we just wanted to kind of get an early read to see if there's any other information, any changes you, well, any, any more, any more information you'd like to see or any other projects you had questions about.
I just have one. Thanks. Um, so the 200 Avenue, Corte, like basically the one right next to the schools between Bonnie Lake High School and Mountain View, do we have any input from the schools on that one? I know they've been talking about trying to get that congestion down. And so it looks like you want to, looks like they want to widen it to five lanes. I just wondered what the school thought about. Is like, are they pushing for it to be done or is it just the city?
This, and this is the city's plan and this is based on the traffic studies that were done for Tahale years ago. And that's the section that's actually, I think, from the school all the way down to the new signal. So yeah. It's, it's kind of both, yes, the, the schools where their traffic was considered, but a lot of the traffic that's being driven to that road is coming out of Tahale. And that was part of the, kind of the EIS that was done almost, I mean, 20 years ago for what kind of, what that cross section needs to look like.
Okay, just wondered.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what, it's kind of coming up from both of those, those two, those two source, trip, trip generating sources.
Sounds good. Okay, I just wondered because I, I knew they were kind of debating it, the school district wise, like.
Yeah, and then the school, yeah, and then the school district's trying to figure out exactly at the signal as they do Mountain View Elementary, what they're going to do with their, their small peak PM hour blip of pick up and drop off. So we've kind of got two, we've got competing things going on on that street.
Okay.
That intersection gets busy when school gets out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the topic? So we will see that again for a public hearing?
Yep. And then you'll get to do all of this again next year because we're going to be updating the comprehensive plan, which means we're going to be going through all of the projects as we update the transportation element and doing it all again. This is just kind of so we can get ourselves squared away for the next couple of years. And so the new transportation plan and capital facilities plan is updated in 2024.
Exciting times.
Always. And then we'll be back. So if you have any questions or concerns and Commissioner Hubler, if you want to talk with me offline exactly how we do all of the kind of math in the black box, you just reach out to me and I can, we can sit down and talk about that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Will the good and the order correspond?
Ben?
Staff comments?
Uh, Grant already stole my thunder. Uh, we are going to hopefully move it into our new public service center in uh, May or June, depending on that. We're hopefully going to go back to in-person meetings at the same time. We were able to get that, the large meeting room there set up with all of the I, the IT infrastructure that we needed to support commission meetings. And so hopefully we'll be back in person in that facility once that reopens here and, and opens for the first time. So I will keep you in the loop as we get closer. I haven't got an official move-in date. They're trying to frantically get the building finished up. So hopefully sooner than later.
Are they going to have an open house?
Uh, I would assume so. Uh, that, that's not been something I've been working on. I haven't really been part of the project other than doing, sending out building inspectors and making sure the inspection side was covered. So, but I assume with the amount of money and council involvement and curiosity, there'll be some open house at some point. I would, I would, I would, I would be surprised if there wasn't.
It's too over budget, Grant. It went too over budget.
Yeah. Jessica, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. Okay, so Jason, you had talked about there's still going to be like a call-in option. Is that going to be for the public or is that going to be for us? Like.
That's what I.
If we get sick or something like that, can we call into the meeting instead?
That's what I, that's the part I've got to figure out because if it's just the call-in option, so we're meeting it for the public, then it wouldn't be because it would just be a phone line that people can listen to the meeting but not participate. So that's, that's all the parts that we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay, just wondering. I guess my job is changing a little bit, so I just, I just wanted to know my options.
Yeah, and then there's the, still the full hybrid meeting and that's all the parts I've got to work with Sadie and the city on to see where we're at.
Awesome, thanks.
Any other staff comments? Commissioner comments? Yes, right.
Jason, I know I asked you last time, but what's the status on code enforcement?
We are in the process of trying to hire a code enforcement officer. We've got the first run of applications in. Ryan and I are going through and reviewing them. And then hopefully we'll be doing interviews in the next couple of weeks and then hopefully selecting a preferred candidate and getting them in sometime late May. Probably early June, just depending on, you know, are they currently employed? Do they have two week notice? How long does it take to do all the stuff? So, uh, hopefully here in the next 45 to 60 days, we have one on board. Um, but we do have a two and a half year backlog of code enforcement cases. So we'll have to start prioritizing, uh, those ones that we that are, that we're going to go after first.
That was going to be my next question because of the backlog, we're only going to hire one?
Yes. And I had to give up a planner to get the code enforcement officer. So it wasn't that we got a code enforcement officer, it was I got a code enforcement officer because I gave up the assistant planner. Which is why we're not having, you know, I'm, I'm trying to balance all the competing interests.
Gotcha. All right. Any other, uh, commissioner comments? Yes.
Thanks for your efforts there, Jason. This is well done. Nicely, nicely done putting this all together. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Oh, second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Yeah, let's see. Oh, come on.